Item three. Approval of the first place. Barnes. Blomman. Ewes. Gorman.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Maple.
Here.
Theo.
Yes.
Tom Chek.
Yeah.
Zebra.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Uh, next, item three, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item four, approval of tonight's agenda.
I would like to make a motion to revise and amend the existing, um, agenda as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion by Corey and a second by Mark.
My motion would be to revise items C, Mozeney Discussion, Mozeney Public District Plan for every student succeeds. Item C on the next bullet of the Billing Committee Report, A, B, C, and D, from discussion to discussion and possible decision.
Okay, I'm sorry, which item is that? Kevin?
Well, I'm going off the ten. Ten and eleven.
Oh, you're going ten?
Yeah, ten, ten and eleven, I guess this is not different amended.
Ten and eleven, the curriculum is in the Billing Committee?
Yeah, did the bullets say discussion? I'd like to, to include discussion and potential, uh, possible decision. There warranted to be a discussion item, they potentially could be warranted a decision-making ability at least offered to the, the, uh, the board here.
Okay, so you just want to add, um, possible decision.
President, you have a motion and a second on the floor prior to his motion, and stated approved as presented.
Um, you can, no, you can actually have more than one motion on the floor at a time, but you have to vote for the first motion first. He does have to get a second.
Go ahead.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a second by Jessica on the second motion, but we will need to go back to vote on the first motion. Uh, the first motion was to approve tonight's agenda, excuse me, as posted as is. Um, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, please.
Can I ask you for a question, just like, you, you can't ask for a roll call vote to have discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
If, if the, if the result is a yes on that motion, then does that preclude this second motion?
Yes, correct.
It eliminates the second motion.
Correct. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, with that, I will ask for a roll call. For on the first motion, please. Barnes.
No.
Blomman. I'm not sure. The, the first motion is to approve the agenda as posted. Okay, no. Okay. Ewes.
Yes.
Gorman. No. Kaiser.
Yes.
Maple.
No.
Theo.
No.
Tom Chek.
Yes.
Zebra.
No.
Okay, the first motion to approve the agenda as posted, what does fail, at the same, we will go ahead and ask for a roll call on the second motion of which?
You can't ask for a vote to have discussion on the second motion. You're gonna play away without schools play away.
Go ahead, that's fine, go ahead, we will discuss, discussion at this point. What he's gonna do is he wants to, on items ten and eleven, and that would be on the Curriculum and Standards, um, item C. And I'm sorry, Kevin, wasn't it eleven, A?
Yeah, all, all discussion items get turned into discussion and possible decision.
On, on eleven, correct?
Yeah.
Except for E, of course.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion.
Why do you think it needs to be a discussion and possible decision? With, uh, with a, an agenda item, a bullet, um, of reference and importance to be on the agenda, at times, there might be a value, quite honestly, to take that discussion and warrant an action. And, uh, I don't think that this board should be limited by, on how we present the agenda, whether we can or cannot take action.
I believe that happens, I mean, it's posted one way, you can't change your vote.
Right now, we're going through that process.
I mean, everything that the public saw, but after like Friday, you can't change it.
Right, the public doesn't know that, you know, the posted agenda, what you're voting on right now is to change what you posted to the public. The public has had this since last Thursday, and they don't know that you're gonna do a possible decision. So, that, that's very true, they may not have come because they didn't think there was action on that item.
So, we should approve this, adjourn the meeting, so we can wait our three days before having a meeting again.
That's, I mean, that's a, that's up to.
Just paying back.
Right. Because it's, it does change whether or not you're gonna have action on an item. And honestly, it just, I, I, I don't know, it hasn't happened, it changes whether or not you're gonna have action on, it may change whether or not you're gonna have action. And I don't know if that impacts the public. I, I think we can assume that it may, but I'm not for sure.
I, I fail to understand why any of those items would be a decision, decision thing. If during that discussion, something comes up that we want further action on, further information on, we request that from that committee or from the, uh, from Steve, as our Billing Committee is managing. But, we can't just haphazardly make decisions based on that discussion. Because i- if, if we have a discussion on the energy efficiency progress, projects, and someone has a question or doesn't understand, not every board member has the same information to make an accurate, uh, decision-making process. There has to be time for information gathering. Unless it's a specific issue that said, uh, you know, our energy efficiency project is, uh, the contractor hasn't shown up for three days. Well, that's a whole different story, but if we're just getting a report on the energy efficiency project, what decision point is that? That's organizing and keeping an agenda moving and flowing. You, you don't get carte blanche to make decisions on every aspect of the operation of the school. I stand behind my initial motion.
I guess I question two back at Kevin on, just looking at, um, item eleven, E, could that not tie into every item under that, under E?
Absolutely.
So, technically, we could take away the A, B, C, and D and just make it under E?
That, that's a very specific question on the agenda item, as was on apparently everybody's agenda.
Right, right, but I'm saying.
That doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't give it all encompassing, uh, authority. That's a specific question about what are, what are we accomplishing, doesn't say, well, you're committed doing everything you can about the energy efficiency. It is, you're committed doing everything you can about science reduction.
Right.
You can't just change that, that sentence.
Yeah, changing the sentence, I'm saying, couldn't you encompass when you get to that point in your discussion, in your report, coming back at that time and pulling some of these back in for a future item?
What Kevin's saying is that he wants a decision-making point tonight, that's not calling for a future item.
No, I'm, okay, to take back A, B, C, and D and add it into, couldn't you not tie it into when you get that part in your committee report?
So, as I, as I look at this, and, sorry, just, it makes, I, this to me is a good conversation, I'm learning something in this, but it would make sense to me. I guess I'd be more comfortable with discussion and possible decision if there was something exigent that the committee, in their committee, determined, hey, we really would like to get a decision made on this one because it impacts the district over the next month, as opposed to across the board. I'd probably feel better about, uh, carte blanche in regards to these.
But the way it's currently presented, the way it was here, it shuts the door and all.
Okay, well, if that reading.
There's nothing to make a decision on.
Can, can we, can we discuss and bring it back to the board next month?
Uh, that's possible.
That's what I would say, let's discuss it tonight, and then we'll make, we'll put it in the agenda to make a decision next month.
Then you would at least have noticed the public, because right now, we have not noticed the public. And when we do agenda planning, when we sit down and we do agenda planning, we talk, is there gonna be a decision on this, or is just, is this an update? And the reason we have those updates is because one of our board members requested that we have updates every month on some items. If you recall, you know, the.
Requested?
Matt Alst, with corrosive Energy Efficiency, um, I think, in Matt and Matt, we talked about discussing all three of those building, so that the public was aware of those every single month.
Well, and those are hot-button issues, they're spending millions of dollars on them currently, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So, they asked that we bring an update every month to the board and the public, so, but there's no decisions on those items. But we did wanna make updates available. And another one, um, school safety is often an update, um, updates, so, I mean, so we think long and hard, it's not, on whether or not we would have a decision. And then I review that with board, with Board President and the Vice President.
The Board President has implemented the agenda?
Yes, we sit down and we meet the week, the week prior, and we, we put together a discussion or update. And if there's not a decision, then we don't put a decision, because there's, there's.
And we can always put it out for the following month.
Yes, at, anytime you need.
In the interest of progress, I will amend my motion to, um, consider, um, approving the agenda as presented with potential discussion points of reference as needed for next month's meeting.
Okay, so you're gonna rescind your second, the second motion amended to this, Jess?
Yes, ma'am, I will rescind that.
And you will second the?
The amended.
Amended motion?
Yes.
Discussion. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, we, we.
I do, I do.
Okay. Item five, approval of minutes from the regular Board of Educational Meeting, May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
You have a question in the minutes? A discussion, a discussion and possible decision of approval of extended contracts. As written, it states that Mr. Theo, Ms. Blomman, and Ms. Maple voted against this, this is our entire, uh, Personnel Committee. Maybe I was confused on what Mr. Theo was trying to say here, but all of them voted against it. I'm not sure if that's written clearly. That, what I remember is that Kevin wanted this discussed, and thought it was worthwhile to have that stuff incorporated in their contract, so it wouldn't have to be recurring to be, uh, reapproved. I don't understand why he voted against it. Unless, I was completely wrong.
Well, actually, uh, the way the motion was initiated by you, it rolled it up into, um, all of them. And quite honestly, there was a couple of very interests where I was not, um, in line with the logic that was presented to me personally. And I voted against it for that particular one reason, but it was amended, it was rolled up into a motion, and unfortunately, that was the end result.
So, did your committee take any further action on this issue?
We ran all the time. I was actually gonna bring forward a few of your agenda items in regard to that, but we didn't, we didn't have time on our agenda.
Okay, just one clarification.
And I, I think too, when they came back and did make the motion, you had seconded it without them, or made the motion to approve prior to their discussion.
That's not what the minister's like.
Did you wanna change them at all?
No, I just wanted to verify.
All right, are you fine with everything? All right, as the end of their discussion, if not?
Mostly approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, a motion by Corey and a second by Kelly, any other questions?
I'll be understanding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then one extension. Okay. Item six, the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the Board President once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and your address. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, and your name?
I'm David Stark, I live at three oh two Salt Range Line Road, Mozeney, Wisconsin, five four four five five. I have issue at the complex with the parking lot with the dust and the mud that's coming off the parking lot. And the options I got so far from Mr. Zimmerman are highly unacceptable.
Okay.
I want something, I would like something done to clarify, so at least we can breathe, we can keep the cars clean, keep the house clean. Right, as of right now, I let the car set out this last summer for three days, I had to wash it, wash the windows before I could safely drive it.
Okay, okay.
Right now, we go down on eighty-nine road, it is mud.
Would you be kind enough, do we, do we have your phone number handy?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it, because it is not on tonight's agenda, uh, we can look at it, and I'll address it with Ann and Brent, and then we will get back to you.
Brent got back to me already, and he's one that gave me three options. I could put up with the mess, I could sue you guys, or I could leave, none of the options acceptable.
Okay, all right, I will discuss that with, with Ann and Brent, and then one of us will get back to you.
I talked to this, Dr. Schultz, I talked to Schultz last year about same issue.
Okay, so last year and this year?
And nothing has been done. I called up for, to get on the agenda about a month ago, I do not know what happened. That's how Mr. Zimmerman got hold of me, because he knew I was talking about parking lot. So, what should have been on the agenda for tonight?
All right, I will, again, we'll address that with Mr. Zimmerman and, and Dr. Schultz, and we will get back to you.
We need a solution.
Okay, all right.
Badly.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, we will move on. Item seven, special presentations, seven A, special educational donation from the Empower Dream Hunts.
Joe Ramsey, five-two-six Sandy Lane, Mozeney, five-four-four-five-five, do you need my telephone number?
No, 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 you're, you're on the report, so you decide.
Um, not sure where I stand, um, I have a check for three hundred and ten dollars, um.
Is mounting.
What I have on here is Mozeney School District, is that, is that correct?
And let me take a picture here of you guys.
I wrote on here promoting better relationships, uh, with our special needs.
So, tell us to, um, how do you raise that money, and tell us your thoughts and your background on why you wanna share this money?
Why you want to share this with us? Well, my daughter says, Dad, you should do more in the district. And I said, okay. And, uh, most of you know about Empower Dream Hunts, we try to, you know, try to better our surroundings. Uh, it's, it's something that years ago, I looked at these old people getting involved with things and wondering why they're so busy. You know, after this, I gotta buzz over to the pig, even though I don't have to work. Uh, but you're always trying to do, you know, different things, uh, in the community. Empower Dream Hunts was designed to just go on a couple hunts. Uh, if you have an opportunity, on our Facebook page, um, we started, people are actually approaching us. We took on too many turkey hunters, could you help us? Well, we've got this track chair, and it's utilized, but in this experience, it did get utilized. My wife's like, why are you getting up at three-thirty in the morning? I said, because I met a guy, I have met, I met him in a conversation, he's from Warbotozo. So, on a Thursday, I get the phone call. And, and this will tie in to providing the track chair and making a difference. And it's, and it's an act of kindness, because I don't have to do it. So, I meet the, I talk to the guy, and he's like, do you know anything about turkey hunting? I said, yeah. So, I call a guy, and this gentleman knows how to calling turkeys. And if you have turkey hunting, I've killed forty-four turkeys, which is pretty good. And I asked this gentleman for help, we asked for land, and long and short, um, that experience provided something pretty neat. But with the money that was, was raised here, I came into the school, and Steve commotion, uh, I was watching kids interact, uh, with special needs. You know, they, you know, because you're trying to get everybody involved. And, uh, so I had this idea, Steve had this funny idea, um, so we thought we would roll with it. Uh, also with DC Everest, DC Everest is involved, Wassa Homes gets involved, we build, hey, could you guys build a hot and blind? Could you build a trailer? So, you're getting, you're actually really, you know, everybody keeps asking, how can we do something? I think, um, I think the ideas are there, but we're, I'm asking those that have the special needs, what do you wanna do? And so, through that process with the trailer, um, a hundred percent of the funds that were raised. And Steve's like, hey, I went over to this place, they're going in Axel, hey, I went over to this place, they're painting. Hey, well, I said, Wassa Homes did this, so we took, uh, some bids, and we, we raised, the total was, uh, six hundred and twenty dollars. So, we split it with the whole district.
Well, thank you very much for.
But, but, but I just wanna share that that's something that's, uh, I think there's more opportunities there.
Absolutely.
And I think maybe those ideas will get other ideas going, but I do appreciate, unless anybody else has a question of, of what we can do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item seventy, two thousand seventeen eighteen, library reports.
I'm Lori Angela, I'm the district librarian, um, those of you that don't know me, have been here for a while. Um, I'm not going to read everything to you, you guys can read it yourself, I just would like to hit the high points for the year. Um, this is for the whole district, elementary, middle, and high school. At the elementary school, our circulation numbers this year, um, the kids checked on, teachers checked out forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven materials. Middle school, high school is combined, we have a combined server over there, their circulation totals were twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven. Um, ES collection has grown, in the library, we are responsible for over twenty thousand materials, in middle school, high school, the two are combined, um, for over twenty-three thousand materials. Um, the library classes this year, we doubled the library classes in the six-day schedule at the elementary school. So, this year, um, I saw with the K three students, um, one thousand three hundred and eighty-one classes, and my assistant saw four ninety-five by herself. At the middle school, high school, I did the four hundred and forty-four classes, and my middle school assistant worked with eighty-four. Study hall students, we had over fourteen thousand study hall students come into the library and use our facilities during that time. The next slide, um, just summarizes the number of searches we've had, these are, most of these are databases that we subscribe to. Now, in the twenty-first century, instead of buying encyclopedia volumes, we subscribe to online databases where students get information. The Badger Link Database, that's, um, through the state, we get that, and that's used quite a bit too, I have a link to it on my webpage. Okay, um, some highlights, again, I mentioned that I've doubled classes at the elementary school. I started a very rudimentary maker space at the elementary school, maker spaces are becoming a very big thing in libraries, um, in the last decade. And, um, that went over very well, I'm hoping to expand it, get more materials, and use it with my second grade as well as my third grade. The third grade this year were kind of a pilot, and along the bottom, you can see pictures of the kids, they were creating with Legos and connects, and then they were writing about their condition, and taking pictures on the Chromebooks, and sharing their write-up with me. Um, I continued working with the early childhood at the elementary school. At the middle school, the biggest thing we probably did this year, two big things really, we joined the Wisconsin Schools Digital Live Book, eBook Consortium. Um, it uses the, um, same database that the public libraries do, but this is set up for schools, and schools around the state have joined it. It's the Overdrive Database, and it's been a huge cost sharing, it's made more eBooks available to our students, and all the schools in the consortium share the class, and next year, they'll be adding audio materials as well. And I also expanded the digital citizenship unit with fourth and fifth grade, and with fifth grade this year, I started using the Google's the Internet Awesome curricular materials, and the kids responded well to that. At the high school, we had another book fair, which we use that profit mostly for scholarships. Um, Carrie, my assistant over there, works so hard with the Chrome Savers class, and working with all the kids who come in with their broken Chromebooks, she's the first line, well, what do I do with this, how do I get it fixed? And we've moved the classroom next to us, actually, we, um, cleared out some shelving, and you can see on the first picture up there, it's one of the students, it's right along, it borders our office, and they're right next to us, so if the students have any trouble, they can come get Carrie, and she's back and forth, and sometimes she's hands-on with the repairs, so, um, that was a big thing this year as well. Um, a big shout-out to my assistants, because I'm all over the place within the week, there's, um, always something going on. So, Connie Gradzulowski works with me at the middle school, Carrie Lashinsky at the high school. Kelly Mullins is just our three-hour assistant that comes in every day, she works, um, in the buildings where I'm not, to help the assistants who's in there, and Monde Pecca at the elementary school, I could not keep the library doors open without these ladies. And coming in next year, we'll continue with, for the Chrome Savers, of course, and we will be, I'm working on, um, writing my curriculum to integrate it with the Wisconsin Information Technology Literacy Standards that were just approved by DPI last November. Um, I am looking at the possibility of joining the eBook Consortium Board, because I would like to say, um, purchases that we're making. And this summer, I've been teaching in summer school, read, review, relax classes at Elephant and Pink, and it's been a lot of fun, especially the Elephant and Pink classes. Quick summary.
Okay, thank you, awesome. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
You love the good word?
Thank you. Item C, discussion in two thousand eighteen, summer school.
Okay, so summer school, um, definitely new for Christie and I, but it has been amazing, um, kids are loving it, parents are loving dropping their kids off. We've had a great first, uh, week and a half now. So, our first session started last Monday, it'll run through next Thursday, and then we'll take the Fourth of July week off, and we'll run, um, the night through the twenty-sixth, that Monday through Thursday, just like the last couple of years, so. This is a picture of Mrs. Nahuda's class, kindergarten class, so they kick off the kindergarten, um, classes are really, really cool in the sense that we know which classes these kids are going into in the fall, and so we link them up with friends that they're going to be with in the fall to help that transition in the fall go a lot smoother. Um, and then if the teacher is also teaching summer school, like Mrs. Nahuda, Kara Trauch is also there, um, they are linked with their teacher for the fall too. So, it gives them a familiar face when they're coming in, it reduces some of those tears the first day, um, and that's been really, really helpful. Overall, summer school has really stuck with the mission the last couple of years, including, um, our district mission of just, that student of progress academically, socially. Christie will talk later about having a really nice dynamic of academic classes and enrichment classes to offer to the students. Um, it's been incredibly collaborative, we have a full-time ESY staff, a ton of ESY assistants, um, as well as genit assistants, um, and everybody is working together really, really well to get the best environment for our students. Um, and we're doing a great job with all hands on deck, especially that first week, so, yeah.
Heard my English, ESY.
Oh, sorry, I, I speak special, extended school year, so those are the, the special education teacher that works for, spent special education students over the summer. Thank you, sorry. Um, oh, sorry, and then this is our archery class you'll see there, um, this is a heavily sought-after class. It, it, it is, uh, filled within minutes of opening, so if you're a parent in the district and you're trying to get your child on this, you can, you can account for how fast it fills up. Um, another just great lifetime activity for students to get their hands on something and, uh, continue it for years to come, so.
Um, all the underlying things are links, so at the top, we don't, we don't have to click on it, but if you wanted to later, those are every class that's offered in the description of it. But I just wanted to highlight some, so here it is, yeah, this is the course handbook, which is like seven pages long of the different classes. Um, so that's what we hand out to parents, and we really tried hard this year not to have fees for classes. Um, there, there is some classes with fees, but if it is, it's, it's five dollars, so, it's very reasonable. Um, so, the academic classes, reading for growth, um, we work with Amber Garvey, um, about closing some achievement gaps. So, we targeted a specific population that needed it, um, we put them with a teacher that specializes in reading, and we have, um, strategies that are to, to close that gap for those students. Um, academic Olympics is math and reading with an Olympic theme, um, to keep it, um, engaging. And then Math Number Ninjas is for our younger students, and Math Maniacs is for the older ones, and in those two classes, they do a group activity, like a game like Yahtzee or Uno. And in those two classes, they do a group activity, like a game like Yahtzee, or Uno, or Dice, something with math that keeps it engaging. And then they have a online program that's very individual to them and where where they're moving. Kick off to kindergarten we talked about, um, Science Fun, they do a lot of experiments in there that they're not able to do during the year. Road Trip Across America is our social studies class, geography. And then credit recovery at the high school, so students that failed classes can make them up in the summer. Some of our enrichment classes, all of those classes filled up on the enrichment side. So swimming lessons, we have two hundred and twenty kids taking swim lessons right now, every day. Which, if if that prevents one life from being saved, it's worth it, so. Um, school forest fills up, the kids love it out there. They go up to the school forest every day, with forty kids going up to the school forest every day. Hunter's safety, by the end of the summer, we think we'll have fifty kids who have passed hunter's safety. Archery, art and magical makers are are, um, highly sought after. And then we work with the community, we have the martial arts guy from town coming in to do martial arts in July. So that class will look as well. Students are very excited about that. And then summer training, we used to have just weightlifting in the past, and they have transformed that program to include speed and agility so that they can kind of get all athletes involved, and it's not just in their pumping weights, but really becoming a better all-around athlete. So there's a hundred and forty kids signed up for that. Yeah, yoga, yoga, speed, and then the weights, is what that works. Um, these are the two sessions, so session one is the June session, and there's fifty-four different classes offered. If you click on session one, I'll give you a, a look at what our schedule is. So there's four periods in the day, and students can pick one class in each period, depending on which grade level they're in. And some classes are offered every period, some classes are offered only some periods. And then second session, there is forty-two different options.
I need to know what party like a princess is.
Party like a princess, we have, we have a, uh, picture of it coming up. They, it's, they actually do fairy tales and read a book every day of some fairy tale, and then they do an arts and crafts project, like build a crown, necklace is. Um, so it's, it's both of those.
And it's quite fantastic in the sense that it was a sought-after class for a lot of our female students. Um, and what's funny is you walk in and and they're like really empowered just when you walk in. They're like, look at my crown, or, you know, look, they're just, they're really cool about it. They watch some really empowering films. So Haley Hines is in charge of that class, and she has done an awesome job just taking, running with it, so.
Um, our enrollment has gone up. I think, um, the candidate, or students at least, they wanna go to summer school, because there's a lot of, um, interesting opportunities. The kids must be up. Our age range, age range, if you look on the left there, that's our preschool students. And this is like one of my favorite projects. Um, this is Amy's project. She had them cut grapes in half, and so it was camping week, and they made big little rocks in a circle, because they're talking about circles. And then they put pretzels for logs between the circles, and then they cut up triangle pieces of cheese for the fire. They built a little campfire and then they ate it.